The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
The August 23rd, 2022, meeting of the Marion County School Board is now called to order. In the absence of our chair, who will be joining us shortly, I will read our school board motto. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices and put or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item on matters which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, you must please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 9:10 a.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
This is Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Don Browning, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3. Mrs. Nancy Throer, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to introduce individuals who'll be providing the inspiration and pledge for us, and I believe Ms. Jennifer Beck, the Director of Fordham Early Learning Academy, has some information for us.
Good morning, Vice Chair Campbell, board members, Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, Ms. Martinez-Lopez. It is my pleasure to be here today representing Fordham Early Learning Academy. Behind me or beside me here, I have just two of our exceptional staff members that are joining us this morning. I first have Mrs. Amy Martin, and she is our school literacy coach, followed by Mrs. Emma Dingman, and she is one of our VPK teachers. Mrs. Dingman this morning will be providing the inspiration, and then we have some very special students this morning that will be leading us in the pledge. But I would be remiss if I didn't say hello to all of our students back at Fordham. They are watching this segment, and they knew that their friends were going to be famous this morning, and they were going to be on TV. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Dingman.
Good morning, board members. Thank you, Mrs. Beck. Thank you for having us here today. I'm so excited to share with you all some of the wonderful things happening at Fordham Early Learning Academy. Firstly, I chose to join the Fordham Early Learning Academy team because I could not stop thinking about how amazing it would be to have an opportunity to be a part of opening a brand-new school with new traditions right here in Marion County where I started my own education. I also chose to join the Fordham family because they were putting literacy and social-emotional learning at the forefront of their focuses, and as a fifth-year VPK teacher, I see a need for both of those things in our classrooms. The theme for this year at Fordham is being a game changer. We, as a team, want to change the face of early learning here in Marion County Public Schools. Our setting offers an opportunity for staff to focus on our youngest learners and to develop foundational reading and math skills while also using social-emotional learning through problem-solving and persistence. Our staff was able to come together before school started to develop our shared vision, and now we have continued to work on our mission statements. We, as a staff, have all committed to educating with excellence. This has helped us kick off the school year with a positive start and a sense of unity. When you walk on campus, students, families, and staff are excited to be at our school. All of our parent engagement opportunities will be focused on the needs of families with young children, and we look forward to having families on our team as game changers. Now, it is time for me to introduce the three of our wonderful students who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. First, we have Michael Hall, a kindergarten student at Fordham, Lilly Villalobos, a VPK student, and Dallas Smith, who is also a VPK student. Come on up.
Sure. Yep, okay. Stand up front. Come on, Dallas. Here. Come here, Michael. Okay, Michael, what are you going to say, nice and loud? All right, here we go. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Michael, what do you say?
Thank you very much.
Oh, please.
Great job, kids!
Good job!
Oh, my goodness, that was so good! You used such loud voices, we could even hear you without the microphone! Great job, kids! I'm so excited for your opportunities at Fordham, and I'm so excited for all that you're going to be learning. This was a great opportunity, and hi to all those kids who are watching, because we're excited for them, too. Thank you to all of you for coming and sharing. This is a wonderful opportunity, as Mrs. Dingman said, to start something new and to be a part of kind of the ground floor of where we're taking this, and the sky is the limit with the game changers at Fordham Early Learning. Board, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
I just want to tell Michael, Lilly, and Dallas, you guys did an excellent job, and those of you at Fordham Elementary, if you're watching, have a great year.
Awesome.
It's so exciting, and since they're famous now and being on TV, we should probably get a picture with them, too, because I'd like to have a picture taken with important people.
Absolutely. So, Board, Mr. Browning, do you have something you'd like to say?
Yes, and since you're famous, and you indeed are, I would like to have an autograph, if I could get that. Maybe have your teach, you know, give it to your teachers something, some which way, or ask one of them for a piece of paper, but I would dearly love to have your autograph.
And as Ms. Throer says, the board would like to come down and take pictures with you.
Yeah, I wonder if that's my phone.
Morning. The later on. There's a super phone here. And then when they're doing that, the note is just crazy, as opposed to school.
We got a smile.
Right here in Smile, there we go. One, two, three, great job. One, two, three, stay right there. One, two. One, two, three.
Is he yours?
My grandson.
Oh, my gosh!
Are y'all sure y'all know who you're doing?
I started running over to you. Dennis, that's so awesome.
All right, Ms. Lilly.
Mr. Browning is still getting an autograph. So, let's go ahead and move forward in the agenda. Dr. Gullett?
Good morning. Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Members of the board, great to see you. What a terrific start to our day today. I recommend approval of the agenda for the August 23rd, 2022, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of items D-17.1, D-17.2, D-17.3, D-17.4, D-17.5, D-17.6, D-17.7, and D-17.8 that have been placed under discussion items C-7.1, C-8.1, C-9.1, C-10.1, C-11.1, C-12.1, C-12.2, C-12.4, C-12.5, and C-16.1 that have been pulled and placed under discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 7th, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. King?
Second.
Second by Ms. Throer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I didn't hear any nays. And no additions or corrections to the minutes. At this time, I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Campbell. I'm sorry.
Vice Chair Campbell, thank you.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this morning's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter related to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 9:10 a.m. Today's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board meeting in the order received by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name, and if you wish, your address for the record. Also, spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When a speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator or staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, do we have any speakers today?
We have no speakers at this time.
Okay. With that, Chair Cummings, I will be passing the gavel back to you. Right there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good morning, everyone. May I have a motion to approve, considering items C-7.1 through C-16.1, with the exception of items D-17.1, D-17.2, D-17.3, D-17.4, D-17.5, D-17.6, D-17.7, and D-17.8 that have been placed under discussion, and items C-7.1, C-8.1, C-9.1, C-10.1, C-11.1, C-12.1, C-12.2, C-12.4, C-12.5, and items C-16.1 that have been pulled and placed under discussion. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Board Member Throer?
Second.
Second by Board Member Browning. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the 2022-2023 Board Directors for the Public Education Foundation of Marion County?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member Throer. In discussion? Is this the one I pulled?
Yes.
Okay. This is the one, guys, I'm recusing myself from this one, this vote, because my name is on the list, so I'll just carry it. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed, have the same sign. Passes 4-0. May I have a motion to approve the disposition of tangible property?
No, ma'am. Second.
Moved by Board Member King, seconded by Board Member Throer. Any discussion?
Yes. Board member, I find this to be absolutely wonderful, that it's pulled in on the open agenda, because we're moving in the direction of being able to address these items and show success, because we truly need success in this area. We're scrambling for dollars, and I believe this is an area that is just, it's a business ready to kick off, and who knows what the limits are if we go at it from a real entrepreneurial point of view. So, I really appreciate this being brought forward. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the grant application, high-impact reading interventions, and targeted supports?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Throer?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Campbell. Any discussion?
Yes. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. The dollar amount of almost a half million dollars, again, this is incredibly important that it be brought forward like this and be discussed. I think there's an opportunity here to address these large figures, large amounts. Just get in a contest, get across the finish line with lower costs than we've done in the past. This has gone on for a while. It has to do with the state of Florida. It's a software contract, but, you know, you can always beat these things, and I want to see our purchasing efforts be very, very entrepreneurial in the sense that we just fight to get a better record faster. Say, if this were the track event and we were running the mile, the numbers always go down. They have all my life, and they can here, too. And every expense that goes down is more money we can spend on our primary mission, which is education. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I have a correction. Let me back up. I was moving too fast. This actually should be item D-17.3, so let me redo this. May I have a motion to approve the expenditure increase request for state of Florida software value-added reseller, SVAR contract, 4323000, NASPOS 16 ACS, SVAR, to purchase software as needed. And, Mr. Browning, that was the same topic that you were just speaking on.
Yes, I just applied those.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Browning, seconded by Board Member Throer. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously. Now, may I have a motion to approve the grant application, high-impact reading interventions, and targeted supports?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member Throer. Any discussion?
Yes, Chair. Again, three-quarters of a million dollars, this is so exciting that this is on the actual agenda, and what I would like to see, and I think all the board members, would be using every expenditure like this as a venue for improved, reduced costs, or greater value received. And it's so easy when we have rationale, we have the results, we can do this, and I am just overwhelmed that this is out on the open agenda or polled, these large dollar amounts, and the public will get used to it, too, and I think it's just incredibly important. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the utilization of his Hillsborough County Public Schools General Planning Service Contract ITM 244 MST IV for long-range school planning and impact fee studies?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Vice, most by Ms. King, seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Any discussion?
Yes, Chair, thank you. The, again, a large amount of money, over $100,000. I would like to see, and I believe we can, pull items like this in-house, and it just, if we could have a, something like this is incredibly important in terms of addressing, like, impact fees. To the extent we can pull something like this in-house, number one, we save the consulting or the general services fee, but we become better experts at what we do. And I would like to see a very aggressive approach to understanding impact. As folks move to Florida and as they move to Marion County, we have an awful lot of people in the retirement area that don't directly impact us with students, but they do impact us with wealth. And the more we understand that, the more powerful we are in terms of doing our job. So, again, I'm very, very pleased, and I would like, maybe this is a good opportunity, all of these, and I won't repeat it, but we've got to fix this software so we get a dollar sign in front of dollar amount. Sorry to be a stickler, but it's just critically important that we're in educational operation, and every dollar amount needs a dollar sign. and every dollar amount needs a dollar sign. Otherwise, it looks like a serial number. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. I know that we talked at length about the need for this very plan, or survey, or study, whatever you want to call it. We talked at length about this in our work session on Thursday, but for the good of the public, it's been since 2006 that we have had such a study to tell us the impact that our student volume and increases, such as population increase in Marion County, such as the dollar amounts coming in. At the time in 2006 when that study was conducted, the school district did have sales tax that was on, we were receiving sales tax. There were other, I think PICO dollars may be in effect. Like, there were lots of ways that the school district was collecting funds specifically for capital expenses that that study was also reflective of. This is the increase you can anticipate in students, but also here are the funding sources that you have to fulfill those needs. All of that has since gone away, and we've continued to see a population increase in Marion County, a drastic population increase in Marion County, and frankly, a volume of students, depending on where those students might be. And I must express that I was speaking with a private school administrator recently. They're bursting at the seams. Trust me, there are students being impacted in Marion County. Charter schools are full, public schools are full, private schools are full. We need to see a concrete study, updated study, you know, it's been decade, a little more than a decade since we had this study conducted. And so, while I appreciate Mr. Browning's sentiment in that he would like to see something like this conducted in-house, if we had the bandwidth and the manpower and the subject matter experts, plural, within our district to be able to conduct such a study, it wouldn't have taken so long for us to get it. So, that's where I see this, and I'm excited that we're moving forward, and hopefully we will approve this today and get started on this plan that is so drastically needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And I, my excitement, if you will, is absolutely overwhelming for the fact that we're discussing something this important, whether it is in-house or it is out, in an outside consultant. The fact that we're discussing these things in a business meeting is, I just concur with you, I agree. It's so important, and as compared to that thing called Consent Agenda when there isn't consent, this is so exciting to be able to have these things discussed. And I think if we do it on a regular basis, the community will be more informed and have a chance maybe to even address us on some of these issues, and we can become more informed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posts have the same sign. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the utilized Seminole State College Agreement with Dell Marketing LP?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Browning. Any discussion?
Yes, Chair. The five million dollars, again, how exciting, folks. We're talking about a general agreement that's gone on since 2018, 2019, 2020, 2022. Now, we're agreeing again. These things need really to be dealt with the way we're doing it right now. This may not look like much, but it's out in the open, and five million dollars that in the past would have gone into a non-discussion situation, it's a big deal. And our contractors, people who could get involved, can say, wow, that makes that agenda just a whole lot more interesting. Ooh, I like what's going on there. I would like to get involved in that. And boom, that's how things get started in terms of reducing costs. Maybe we can blow this thing out of the water with some of our talented people and do a better job, because big, round-number contracts are a red flag out in the business world, and we are in business. We're spending an awful lot of money. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posts have the same sign. May I have a motion, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the utilization of the School Board of Volusia County Florida Contract FIN 20002KM for internal auditing services?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thoreau. Any discussion?
Yes, Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yes, again, a hundred thousand dollars and an outside contract. Again, a round number, big red flag, round numbers. And when they go through, they tend to, these things tend to get going in a bureaucratic situation. They tend to, well, if they're doing it over there, maybe it's okay. And the idea, each one of these that have come up before us are open targets to reduce costs, outperform these people. It's like a hundred-yard dash. Let's beat these guys to the finish line. I would like to see that. So, the fact that it's being brought forward, now folks are aware of it, start looking for this, if you will, in the agendas that are brought forward for every board meeting. This is very exciting. And if you don't do it this time, maybe next time, and any ideas that come forward from our purchasing department, anyone in staff that can enhance something like this, let this board member know, or the superintendent, or any board member. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the utilization of the state of Florida Alternate Source Contract 43211500 WSCA 15 ACS for the purchase of Apple Computers, peripherals, and services?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Browning.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Browning, go ahead.
Yes, just, I will reuse my previous comments for the Volusia County similar contract. Just, if you're looking on video, just scrub back one item and you'll, it's identical. We can do better, very likely, but we can't do better if we don't get in the race. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve delegation of signing authority for the state of Florida statewide voluntary pre-kindergarten program VPK contracts?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King, Board Member King. Any discussion?
Yes, Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Browning.
Yes, thank you. Especially with the PPK folks that, VPK rather, that were here today, the idea of having, this is an off-air, I have the wrong one here in front of me. What is the number on this one?
Seven point one.
Seven point one.
I'm sorry. Stand by one moment.
It's not a dollar, Melita.
Why I don't have seven point one in my?
Your notes.
The, my comment was, is that on VPK, the legislature is very much in favor of pushing hard with early learning and accelerating. I spent some time with different legislators from our area yesterday, and they're very, very pro-positive on the VPK idea, because it starts off this beginning to the third grade in learning to read, and you just hear it on a regular basis. And this is coming from Tallahassee down, and I know it comes from Marion County up. So, any thoughts on this? I know we have, on the board, we have, we have experienced teachers, and VPK is important, but I don't think everybody fully understands it. And I'm excited to see items up and discussed. And I would just like to hear more about it on a regular basis, because it's the kickoff to our effort to educate, and might help get us, and I'm hearing this, might help get us to that top 10% that we're searching for. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Any further discussion?
I'll just say quickly that I support the signing authority going to the coordinator of early learning, which is what this agenda item is addressing. I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve independent contract agreement for sign language interpreters?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning? Pull this one?
Yes, I'm, eight point one. Stand by. Okay, okay. Thank you. That makes sense. Thank you, Chair. Yes. The, this is three-quarters of a million dollars. It's part of a very big deal in terms of a large amount that we spend for contracts for disabilities. And I know we have experience on the board, again. Are we getting, for the $708,000 on this item, how are we doing? Should we be bidding this? Should we, could we do a better job on it? It's a lot of money. It's an important item. As we bring anyone with disabilities forward, it's critically important, and I thought this was so large and so important that it should be brought forward, at least for an opportunity for someone with experience in disabilities, to address, how are we doing with this? Should we continue it? Are we getting our value for this quarter of a million dollars? And can we do any better with this? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak to that. It's essential that we have these services for our students that are deaf and hard-of-hearing. They go into the classrooms, and they are an interpreter, and sometimes, not only for the students, but also for their families. They're utilized in numerous ways, and it's a skill set that, it's pretty standard, it's a lot of money, you know? It's not anything that's gonna, I don't think that that could be lower in price. The only way is, I did work with somebody one time, and he had a deaf, hard-of-hearing child, so it was a free service, you know? But there's not very many of those, so this is an essential item, so.
I agree. This is essential, and this helps level the playing field for kids, creates equity for them to be able to participate in public education. So, I'm there with you. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve independent contract agreement with SMA Healthcare Inc. Corp?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Browning.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Mr. Browning, you pull this one as well?
Yes, again, it falls into the, this is a hundred thousand dollars, so it does meet the threshold for, or into important money. It's mental health. How successful are we? When something like this comes up, and it's a round number, I like to address the effectiveness. Yes, it's important. As a matter of fact, it's very important. If somebody is having a problem, we want to be able to deal with it before that problem expands out of line. Are we getting full value this way? We've got the money, we've got funding. Is this, is the value here, is this the best way? And really, this would be to the superintendent. Can we improve on this? Can we get the word to the public? Perhaps there are better ways to address it. I despise round numbers, because there's a tendency, if there's a round number in a budget, to just slide up and fill it. So, that's the reason I would like to hear this discussed. And if we are having great value, I think this is the time to speak about it. If we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars, wow, we've done this, we've done this X, Y, and Z, and we're really getting a value for our money. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome, Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Grant Application 2022-2023 Title III Part A Supplemental Services for English Learners and Immigrant Students? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Browning.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning, you pull this as well?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Again, this falls in the same area. It's close to a half million dollars. Critically important that immigrant or students that don't speak English have help and are able to learn English, and certainly, they're going to do better. Is this the best way to do it? This is a half million dollars. We've been moving this thing through routinely since 2019, 2020, 2021, now we're 2022. And if we're concerned about dollars, I would like to see them, we asked for the grant, and then how we spend it really matters. So, if we get this out in the open, it's more likely that we will get full value and perhaps reduce the cost. So, this should not go automatically year after year after year in a consent agenda. And I say that just categorically, because if we have it in a non-discussed agenda, by definition, folks are not gonna know about it, and they're not gonna know how you feel about it, and how hard we're grinding to increase value and reduce costs. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Chair Campbell.
Chair, I think Mr. Browning's concern here, and I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, but it appears that it's not necessarily the concern about applying for the grant. It's that the board midway through, or at some point, receives an update on our English Language Learner students, so that we can see the progress, the impact that this grant and these funding resources have made on those students. And so, to that point, I do think it would be helpful for us, whether it's mid-year, whether it's end of year, perhaps next April, May, something that we as a board did see some specific report on our English Language Learners before we do have another Title III grant approval. I think that potentially is what is being requested. I don't know if that's something that we could incorporate in the future. Dr. Carlet, maybe?
Chair, if I may. Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Actually, our strategic plan reviews always include student success outcomes, and so our second language learners- And so, um, our second language learners is one of the, the groups, the subgroups that are included as part of the student success outcome. So you will see that as we did last year. You will be seeing the, the periodic updates throughout the year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, uh, exactly. Now, there, now, now we're talking, that's discussion on the subject. And I'd like to see it brought forward when it's germane to the issue. Because this is a business meeting. Now, that isn't meant as a criticism, it's meant as a, as an opportunity. Uh, we can, it, it wouldn't take, it wouldn't take a long time, uh, Superintendent, to, to, to bring that forward while we're asking for the money, while we're searching for the funds, and perhaps, uh, when we get ready to spend it, the money. Uh, it's, it's just exciting to this board member to see the dialogue out there and to help the community understand what we do for a living and what we're doing to improve our academic performance, uh, and what we're doing to address budget issues. Uh, so it's, um, it, it, it's, uh, about how we get dollars, how we spend dollars, and then if, if we're, if we're failing, if, if it's a real problematic situation, I want to hear about it, or if we're having great success on something, or marginal success. It was just a, and that, and that analogy of a, of a, uh, a mile runner, a hundred yard runner, track star, even a tenth of a second is huge. And I, I just like to hear the positive, this is a business meeting, and I like to hear about progress, whether we're, if it's Ford Motor Company, we have increased such and such, say, in, in, um, pickup truck, uh, sales. And while it's incremental, we didn't slide down, we actually moved ahead in the marketplace, that type of thing. And boom, or we're sliding down. Well, wait a minute, let me see that. I wanna, I wanna focus, uh, more on that. So that way, it, it, it just, uh, it, it just feels like we get our job done, uh, 'cause, you know, nineteen, 2019's gonna come and go, 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023. It's kind of the way, uh, the world turns. And, uh, I'd love to hear about effectiveness. And I think we have some messages we can talk about, uh, on that subject. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Post have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve agreement with certification partner LLC?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Thorne.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning, you pull this one as well for discussion?
Uh, yes. While it's, uh, fifty thousand dollars, it's actually a lot of money when you talk about a classroom. Um, I, I'd like to speak to the value. If anybody's got any thoughts, uh, on the value, on the as need basis, um, uh, if, if we can do, if we can do things in-house, uh, if we can reduce the costs, uh, if we can speak to the value, uh, it matters to me, uh, dramatically, as I've been indicated. And this is another one. Although it's small, uh, uh, the fifty thousand dollars, in most people's world, uh, that's rather large. So I'd like to see as much done in-house and maybe the, hear about the successes, if in fact, we can start down that road, uh, uh, solving, uh, problems in that, uh, uh, in that realm and reducing costs and increasing our value. Thank you.
Any further discussion? That being now, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve bid 3943 Outdoor Furniture Purchase and Installation Term Contract?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Browning, you pull this as well?
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair. Yes, I did. This is, um, six hundred, it's over a half million dollars, six hundred and fifteen thousand, seventeen, uh, uh, six hundred and sixteen thousand, just about. It's troubling to me to ever see two hundred requests for bid going out and one coming back. Uh, that indicates to me that there's a problem. Uh, it just, it, it's maybe the way the bid is written, uh, I, I'm not sure. But this is picnic tables and it's a couple thousand dollars apiece. Um, I, um, I, I'm even thinking that perhaps in shop classes or something like that, we might even get deeply involved in maybe building a few of these, uh, for the experience and then take a look at how we purchase, uh, and have that be instructional, uh, uh, Superintendent. That's, it was just, it, it just looks to me like an opportunity. This is what they do like at, uh, at Lowe's or just, you know, Home Depot or whatever. They have wholesale side of things. I cannot believe that they wouldn't be interested, uh, right here in the county on outdoor furniture at two thousand dollars a pop. I just don't know what's going on with this, but I would like to see any bid like that, uh, be looked at. It's just an opportunity to dig in a little deeper. Uh, and again, we're trying to get greater value and reduce costs and this, and educate. And this looks like it's a huge opportunity. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna add that lots of times we'll send out a lot of bids and may not see very many because there's always rules and regulations with public education and government that pretty much strangles us lots of times. So I, I know you brought that up a lot, but that is unfortunately the truth. There's a checklist and guidelines that by law we have to abide by. So as I hear your point, and it's extremely valid, um, again, that's usually the case. It's not, you know, any other reason. And that's what I have to say about that. Thanks.
Chair.
Yes.
Yes. And, and, and I, I really appreciate that, uh, addressing the subject and fighting toward that. Uh, bureaucracies are something that my entire life in business, uh, I just wondered how they survived. Their government can be so inefficient, you kind of feel for them. But with that said, if you're inside and you're entrepreneurial and you're really thinking that way, you can grind these things out. And anything that is in your way, uh, I do not respect it. I go directly, for example, um, um, uh, Governor DeSantis, um, boom, those people are up there, they're pros at digging into it, they can go to the legislature. We can go to the legislature if there's an issue. And I just want it brought forward. If it, if it just goes routinely along, well, they, you know, it's something out of, and I don't mean to be so cavalier, because they're probably not gonna do it that, that cavalier. But, uh, i- if we need a change in some regulation that's causing us a problem, that's causing us to pay two thousand dollars for something that could be one thousand dollars, um, Senator Baxley, Senator Perry, Representative Harding, Representative McLean, those guys are all, every single legislator up there are ready to, I don't wanna say do our bidding, but it's do our bidding. I mean, they work for us. That's what they do. And it's exciting to me. So if we could think more like we're free enterprise, uh, then we wouldn't be hamstrung by, by, um, those things that cause us to be less efficient than free enterprise. Thank you, Chair.
Chair.
Go ahead, Board Member Thorne.
Thank you. Um, yes, uh, Board Member Browning, you raised some good points and, uh, helped me understand it is, uh, troubling to you, um, to, enough to where you pulled this item. And I would think that there would be some suggestions, uh, you know, based on conversations that you've had prior to this meeting, um, with the folks that are tasked with doing this. Because to me, two hundred and thirty-seven invitations to bid with six companies submitting bids and then one vendor being recommended, um, tells me that there's a lot more of the story. And when there's, uh, something that seems untoward, the way I go is to the source and then I report back. So I'm interested to hear what you find out and I'm ready to vote.
Chair.
I call the question.
Well, I, I'd like to, she recognized me, so I would like to, I would like to.
All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Post have the same sign. Pass unanimously. No, no, sorry, four one.
It did not. And, and I'm, uh, Chair, just a point, point of.
Pass this four one. We're moving on, Mr. Browning. That's, that's not a, that's not a point of order.
Then I would like, I would like to be recognized to make a point of order. Thank you.
We're not recognized upon order, we're moving through the agenda.
You need to recognize for a point of order.
Okay.
Yeah, I must be recognized.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Uh, sir, when a board member is, is identified by name, they must be able to respond. So I will respond at this point.
Now, that you're, you state your point of order.
Okay, that, okay, uh, my point of order is that I was, I was, I was identified, uh, by name, and so I must be able to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Customary practice, Robert's Rules of Order indicates a number of practices specifically for decorum in a public meeting during debate. Uh, customary practice is that board members do address one another by the usage of you or the usage of their name in discussion. Uh, that has been our longstanding and customary practice. If we wish to divert from that practice, then none of the board members may refer to themselves in the tense of, of, or they may not refer to anyone as you, they may not refer to themselves as I, and they must refer to each other only as the member who spoke previously. They cannot use any names whatsoever. That's the customary practice, has not been that. It is one which is permitted for board members to address one another. Now, if it comes to decorum or debate, the idea is criticize the speaker, but not the, criticize the, uh, subject matter or the issue, but not the speaker. Um, if your point of order is that, then it's well taken. If your point or order is, is as to the customary practice, then we need to vote on altering the customary practice such that no one will refer to another person by name, only the use of pronouns and only the use of their, um, title.
Chair.
So which point of order would you like to proceed with?
Well, I would like to proceed with, uh, the idea that we're not operating out of customary, we're operating under Robert's Rules. That's my understanding.
Correct. And so therefore, if you wish to, i- if, if you wish to operate within Robert's Rules of Order, that is going to become a very, uh, more difficult process when it comes to, I cannot refer to myself as I, you cannot refer to yourself as you. Um, though you must refer only in the extremely broad sense. And that's something that the board at a later date can alter its bylaws if they wish in order to adopt a different customary practice, in order to adopt a customary practice as part of the bylaws. So there are two options, as I see it. One is you can open that can of worms, which is that it becomes extremely clunky, extremely clunky to get away from customary practice. Or the other is simply to ask that if one board member is feeling criticized or in something like that, he is provided with an opportunity to respond, which would probably be, in my opinion, in my advice to you, a more well point, a more well-taken point of order that practically solves your, your problem. So that's not my decision to make, that's my advice to you. So.
Uh, my, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Uh, the, I, I, I'm just going off, uh, uh, version two thousand, uh, of Robert's Rules. And the, the, it, it's clearly stated that, that a board, uh, that the, the board position is addressed, not a member by name. That's, that's just sort of standard.
Yes.
Uh, it, and it's not customary not to do that, but if, if, uh, for, for example, uh, on this point of order, uh, often if you're for something or you're against something and you go first, if you are referenced, it is appropriate under standard, just the most general, uh, 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 Robert's Rule, uh, following of Robert's Rules, that you mu- you're, if you are noticed, uh, uh, you are able to respond. And it's just pretty straightforward, not a, not a tricky thing. Because the opposite of that is, for example, to have one member continually go first and then be, the arguments be presented against, and then boom, uh, case closed. Well, I don't think so because typically, typically, if you bring something forward, you have opened the door to that subject matter. And if you have opened the door to that subject matter, it's just common courtesy, uh, to allow for discussion on that item and not have it be shut off just because there's a majority against you. Perhaps they would change their thoughts if they heard, uh, i- if, if the other member was able to address what was now introduced, uh, uh, by another board member. So it just kind of straightforward. I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel here, but I do, I do, if something is brought up, uh, and, and, for example, we say, uh, we are no longer gonna drive, uh, personal cars, we're gonna use Uber, uh, and then somebody says, well, that may be so, but I am, uh, going with the idea that we're all gonna ride on a bus. Well, wait, then I have the, the other party has the ability to address that bus issue, if in fact, that's a new idea that's being introduced. So I, you know, it's pretty easy, pretty easy. I don't wanna make a real big deal out of it, but let's, uh, let's be as, we, we say at the start of every meeting, we're gonna be courteous, appropriate, uh, we're gonna leave, you know, we're gonna be as transparent as possible. If you bring up an idea, just don't bring it up if you don't want it to be discussed. If you do want it to be discussed, bring it up because we're an open forum. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve bid 3946 MF Towing Services Term Contract?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Oh, yeah, I don't know that we actually voted on the previous.
Did we didn't vote on that last one?
No.
Okay. So I thought we voted on it.
We voted on the call to question. We didn't vote on the.
What it was, it was a four one.
It was a four, it was a four, he didn't vote.
Okay. I thought we were voting on the call to question and not on.
I thought, I thought we were too.
On the actual item.
Well, yes, okay, so.
Okay, so we'll go, I'll back up.
Again, with the vote, can you please state what's on the table?
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve bid 3943 Outdoor Furniture Purchase and Installation Term Contract? We've had the motion, or we've already said we're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously.
Yes.
We get. May I have a motion to approve bid 3946 MF Towing Services Term Contract?
I made the motion.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Browning, you pull this one for discussion as well?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, I did. And, uh, this, uh, uh, falls into, uh, th- this area of towing. It's not a huge amount, and I like the idea that, you know, we don't have more breakdowns, uh, than this. But I don't like the idea of so many requests for bid, uh, as I was indicating on a previous, it's just a, it's a red flag, there's something wrong with that. Uh, not sure, not sure what it is, but it, it kind of indicates that perhaps they're, we're, we're asking somebody in Cincinnati to, uh, uh, talk to us, uh, in reference to our need for potential towing. Uh, I don't know, uh, but it, it just doesn't make any sense. It, it seems like a waste of money and I'm a, I'm a stickler when it comes to value versus, uh, versus, uh, uh, cost. Uh, and, and on the idea of bringing. And, and on the idea of bringing these up, this is a board, and I, and I will just touch on that briefly, this is a board in a business meeting. The board in the business meeting doesn't go in, and if it's, if it's for changing the tread on tires, go in and, and change the tread, or get in the middle of the mechanics changing tires. What they do is they address an issue from a board policy point of view, and at that point, you have discussion, and then you have direction, perhaps. That's my interest in, in this. I like the idea on this towing of $37,000, but I don't like round numbers, and I'd like it to be as tight as possible, and I don't like anything that started back in 2016 and not being changed, I'd like it to be, or not being discussed. I'd like it to be discussed, so that, at the very least, this time, we're doing this next year, it can be, somebody that's interested in it can say, wow, wow, look at that, $37,000, that got past me, I didn't hear any discussion on that. Thank you, Chair.
Chair.
For the point of the, the public being aware, this actually is a new bid, and so while there had been prior board action on a previous bid, this is a new bid that was put out, and so no prior board action had taken place on this particular item, contrary to the previous statement that was made. Ready to vote?
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye. Aye.
Post have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a vote, have a motion to approve reject bid 3944 GM Asphalt Paving and Related Services?
This is a motion to approve the rejection of the bid.
Right.
Motion to approve the rejection of the bid, I'm making that motion, it's just, it's, it's difficult to say, it's a motion to approve the rejection.
May I have a motion to approve the rejection?
I'll second the motion to approve rejection of the bid.
Okay. Motion made by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member Thora. Mr. Brownie, you pull this one for discussion as well?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, yes, this is kind of a policy setting, and, and there's reference to the markets, and, and I just, I, I didn't want this to go through without discussion. When it comes to the idea of future, future contracts and current contracts being kind of held hostage to prices, we will have swings in prices, I think, as we go, go forward. I don't like the idea of, of kind of admitting to the increased costs, and then maybe opening a, opening a venue where we begin to kind of give extra latitude to vendors. That just is, it's just a, an avenue to disaster when it comes to holding people's, a vendor's feet to the fire. I've been a vendor all my life, or for the most, you know, over 50 years, in, in, in dealing with various governmental organizations, and wow, if, if I could make a bid and then adjust my prices as I went along because my costs went up, that would be a big deal. The, just the idea of an over sensitivity to increased costs, we've got others, but like for, for example, gas, has been very high. Often, there is a force majeure item in a contract that allows, like the Ukraine war, allows you to step out, but it has to be something like that, not just a sensitivity, which I've been hearing a lot, not just here, but we can't get products, we can't get this, we can't get that. Well, maybe so, but that just means we need to get a little tighter with what we're doing, and address it a little more, a little differently, because the rest of the world is still grinding out contracts, and if you bid on it, and you get it, you're gonna, you're gonna perform, or your bond is, if, if bond was required, you're gonna, you're gonna have to pay. So, I, I just, I like the idea of, if we didn't get, you know, we can, can we reject? Yes, we can, and I think that we, we need to applaud that, that idea. Sensitivity to cost increases, we've got 10 weeks of straight down, I follow the market every day, multiple times a day, commodity markets, and we have had a straight down, and maybe you all have seen it at the pump, so it's, it's volatile, and I'm just very reticent to change normal, normal requirements of vendors to perform. If you're in the biz, business and you want to bid, then go ahead and do it, but you're going to be held accountable, and unless it is, say, a force majeure, a war, or something like that, or an act of God, then you will perform, or your bond will handle it for you. Thank you, board, thank you, Chairman.
Vice Chair Campbell.
So, I am of the understanding that the purpose of this rejection is twofold, and I believe they would be in the same vein as, as what the previous board member has just stated, but using prior thought process that we've heard multiple times on this board, that, as previous board members have discussed, that we don't want to lock ourselves into a scenario where we're saying we will pay up to a certain dollar amount over the course of a year. So, I believe that's point number one, that we're not wanting to set ourselves into a contract situation where, you know, we're approving up to a certain amount. Additionally, we don't want to set ourselves into a contract that locks us in on a certain price, knowing that it is possible that those prices will go down, and if that is in case the, in, in fact, the case, then we need to ensure that we're not locked in this high pricing when the prices may go down. So, while I understand the argument being made that we don't necessarily want to subject ourselves to the inflation and the market conditions and so forth, the purpose of rejecting this one bid is saying, we didn't even have more than one vendor even interested in trying to bid an annual agreement, and we do want to take each one of these individual, large-scale contracts on a case-by-case basis, rather than locking ourselves in for the whole year. So, I, that's how I see this rejection, I have absolutely no problem with it, I don't like the idea of us locking ourselves into a market condition bid, frankly, and that's what this one would be if we didn't reject it today. So, I'm ready to vote.
Chair.
Chairman.
Yes, yes, okay, so, that's exactly, that's exactly right. When we do make a change, say, annual, let's, let's just take this one, annual, it does need to be discussed, because perhaps with market conditions, and we're, we're offering the, soliciting bids, maybe we want to do one month, maybe we want to do six months, maybe we don't want to do a year. We can set those conditions when we solicit the bids. What I, what I get really nervous about is setting a precedent on one item, and our plan is moving forward is to release individual bids for any large projects as needed until the market stabilizes. I don't think we want to get into that world. Until the market stabilizes, it's just not prudent to be in that world. The market is never going to stabilize, every day, the market goes up and goes down, that's just the way it does. So, getting out of hard bids, whoa, that is a slippery slope for me. So, it does warrant discussion, and, and it's something, while I agree with this, I don't agree much with the rationale, because I think we can set tighter reins, more expansive reins, we can do it to protect ourselves, we can do it to protect all parties, and maybe if we aren't getting bids, we can adjust it to six months, we can, you know, but at least we have six months, as compared to, this is very open, kind of like, until markets stabilize, we're going to be in a more open situation, that scares me, that scares me, because we could really start going down the road in that avenue.
Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
It may become relevant in the future for other board discussions as well. Most of our contracts are written, or many of our contracts that involve bids are written in such a manner that they permit, within the discretion of the district, to allow a vendor to go beyond a certain bid because of market forces, or whatever the case may be, if we determine it to be a good faith reason, but only once within a six-month period. And then if that should happen again, the market continues to increase, or they seek another increase, then it would trigger them not to be permitted, the bid would cancel, and we wouldn't bid with them again unless they went and, and they would bid their, their product openly. So, that may be a portion that just is, is relevant for future discussions on other matters that will come up in the future, because this is an ongoing factor. In fact, the price of, I don't know, a roll of tape, maybe we've got a bid for 75 cents, and no one can supply it for less than a dollar, but our only alternative would be to go to Office Depot and buy it for 209, you know, that's, that's, or not Office Depot by name, sorry, Office Depot, whomever, the, a local retail supplier, at, at even more. And so, then we get into a position where it may be difficult for us to do business with somebody who has got a bid, who is still a wholesale producer at a lower rate than going and trying to get the same product on retail. But, our, you know, the best-laid plans of mice and men, of course, we have here the idea that we're trying to allow them to, in a, in a real emergency that falls somewhat short of force majeure, have some middle ground, that doesn't always work, so, that's, of course, when those items come, and if they do, we'll bring them to the board's attentions that we can address them appropriately at that time as well. But, these are forces we can anticipate being, dealing with probably considerably over the next year or more.
Chair. Member Thora, then Mr. Brownie.
Thank you, and, and since we're giving the community the impression that we're reading verbatim from this particular agenda item, it's important to point out that there was no period after "stabilizes sufficiently," the actual sentence reads, and I am quoting verbatim, "Our plan moving forward is to release individual bids for any large projects as needed until the market stabilizes sufficiently enough to continue with term contract bids again." So, that's an entirely different statement, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear to the community that's paying close attention, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brownie.
Yes, thank you, yes, and, and, and that is a, that's, that's huge, all right, first, I'd like to, I appreciate the discussion on future items, because these things can get complicated, and we must have that routine of discussion. This is a business meeting, this, what we're talking about is business, and the idea of changing our policy just because we couldn't go for a year, and then having open situations, wow, for me, that could be, that could be interpreted as, we're going to wait until things stabilize before we go for bids, and I think that has to be brought as a separate item, not as, as part of a rejection of a, of, of a, of a contract to reject a bid. So, it, it's, it's, that is a big deal, it's a huge deal, and, yes, reading that, and it's down in the rationale and results, wow, to me, that is not, I, I am, I'm not agreeing to that, I am agreeing to the rejection of the bid, that's fine, but down here, and I feel safe with this level of discussion, however, this is a slippery slope, that we would wait until markets stabilize, because, as I said before, markets don't stabilize. Yes, you have periods of higher inflation and less inflation, but we're, golly, I think we're at six, eight percent, depends on how far back you want to go on, month to month, on CPI. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Are you ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Post have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve utilization of the Interlocal Purchasing System TIPS Contract Number 210304 for MRO Maintenance, Repair, and Operation of Facilities and Grounds, Supplies, Equipment, Tool Rental, Sales, and Services. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Brownie.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Brownie, I understand you pulled the item for discussion.
Yes, thank you, I just, I believe that, I, I despise big round numbers, $100,000, this meets that government level, where it does get discussed. I would like to see this broken into smaller groups, multiple, multiple items, and multiple sources inside a, a, a bid area is, is dangerous, I believe, in terms of getting full value. If it's been approved, boom, it's out there, it's multiple sources, would probably reduce, I would say almost with certainty, would reduce the, the cost of these items. To have it out in the open like this and to be under a contract that, we don't even know the exact terms of it, that just precludes great opportunities or bids that might come in, that we could move towards. So, I, I just wanted to have some discussion on this, single source is never best, open, competitive sources, that's always preferable, in terms of increasing value and reducing cost. Thank you, board, thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Post have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve scheduled, a motion to approve the scheduling of a public hearing, five-year District Facilities Work Program for fiscal years 2022, 2023 through 2026 through 2027. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Brownie.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brownie, you pull this one for discussion as well?
Uh, yes, I'd, I'd just like to have this, this is a five-year plan, it really needs to not, needs to be out in the open and discussed somewhat, I would just like to hear, hear any thoughts. I, I, in, in particular, I want, I, I'd like to see a schedule of projects, so I can see them in, in a group, a schedule of individual proposed projects, location, amount, property, and, and, a, a, an indication of the severity of the need, and, and some are just slam dumps, some are critically important, some are somewhat important, some we know will be rolled over into another five-year plan, and not ever got, you know, not gotten to within that period of time. You know, I'm all for it, all for having that, having that public hearing, I, I would just like to, I, I wanted to put that forward, just a specific sheet that would help pull it all together, and then with that preference, maybe a grading system, let's say, an A, B, C, D, that type of thing, so we could just kind of get a, a 30,000-foot view. kind of get a, a, a 30,000-foot view, uh, of that five-year plan, because that goes out quite a ways, and it will really matter. Uh, some things absolutely need, we need to garner support for some projects, move it, say, from a D to an A, simply because we see it that way and the community can see it that way. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion, Mr. Board Member King?
Yeah, I just, um, we discussed all of this last Thursday in length. Mr. Knight, Ms. Dobbins, we spent a, a good couple hours on it, I believe, and, um, they gave us a nice detailed sheet and a plan, so I'm, I'm not really sure what more you could be asking for at this point. And I'm being respectful, but that was presented to us. We even had a great discussion and a work session on it, so.
And again, if, if I may.
Vice Chair Campbell.
The purpose of this agenda item is to schedule the public hearing, so we're not actually having the public hearing today. So, um, perhaps if there are additional items that warrant additional discussion, uh, when that agenda item does post for the public hearing, um, we can see if there had been any, not changes to the actual work plan, but potentially additions to the way it's presented. I, I'm not certain that, I mean, we did have, as Ms. King stated, uh, we did have extensive discussion. And again, as we discussed on that day, while it is a five-year plan, we're really only approving the first year, because we understand that things will change over the course of time. So, um, I'm, I'm ready to vote to schedule the public hearing.
Chair. Yes, yes. Uh, and, and this is, um, to, to, to put focus on a, a, and the, the information, yes, a different way. Uh, I'm, I'm looking, uh, I see Ms. Dobbins is in the, in the audience that, uh, if I could just address directly, uh, I'm looking, and perhaps this will help everyone, that listing with, with A, B, C, D, or what, what, however it's, I, I don't want to completely author it, but, uh, that listing, uh, that, that shows it in a list format, yes, we, we, we've gotten it several different ways, and we've got a lot of good information. This isn't, this isn't cascading that information, it's adding to something I would like to see and I think would, would help, uh, the public, uh, in seeing these. It's like, oh, wow, look at this. Oh, wow, look at this. Oh, wow. Oh, wait, that's a, a D? That's not, not a pretty high priority, you know, that kind of thing. Or this is an A. And maybe we, we discuss that in the public hearing, or they discuss it. So it's just a little bit more information, that was all.
Uh, thank you, Chair members of the board. Um, Board Member Browning, um, if you could provide some more clarification, we did have, I think, a rather extensive conversation, um, five days ago on this topic. So if there's something in particular in addition to the, the detailed list of projected needs, um, I would certainly be happy to hear that so that we can, um, ask the team to put that together.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And, and I, I have sort of outlined it here in my notes, and, and, uh, that, that, I, I'll, I'll supply this to you, but this way we can have the discussion on it, and that's great. Yes, thank you. I appreciate that, Superintendent. That's exactly what I'm looking for.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion on this? Because this is, again, this is a motion to approve the scheduling of a public hearing. This is not going back, this is just approved. So if, um, any board member has questions, I think they need to get with the proper, um, business owners to get those questions answered, but this motion is about approving a sched, uh, public hearing. So all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled on September 1, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. No topics at this time meeting will be canceled.
Oh.
If, if I may, Chair Cummings, um, we had a attorney-client session that was scheduled, uh, for today, which was canceled and moved. Um, the cancellation of that, under Florida statute, a attorney-client work session can only be held, uh, during a either work session or board meeting in which we meet, adjourn, and then move into session, um, and come back and announce that we're back on the record. So, um, Ms. Green, that being said, um, of Vice Cole Law, we still have that claim, uh, with, um, claim J 8670115, Monet as N G, uh, Natural Guardian of A M, a minor, versus School Board of Marion County, which still needs to be addressed.
Can we do it on the first?
We can do it on the first, and I can have it advertised on the first. There's nothing else there on the first for us to do as an actual work session. However, um, I can introduce and have as a work item, uh, there, um, uh, some of our, a briefing on our Neola policy updates, because there are a number of them that are just routine, that need to be brought up, and ones that we're trying to capture to get put on for rulemaking and development, which would be an appropriate use, I believe, of the time, and would not involve the time of a number of other staff members to have to deal with as well. So it could essentially just be my presentation, if that is, of course, within the, um, discretion of the superintendent, uh, appropriate action for us to take.
Okay. Vice Chair Campbell.
And Chair, I also wanted to ask today, um, if we could have a board agenda item for a work session to discuss our legis, legislative platform policies, and prior to us submitting those to FSBA, which is September 16th is that due date, I think September 1st would also be appropriate, for us just to bring our ideas and talk about them so that we can then set them, you know, send them to FSBA for the advocacy committee then to consider. Uh, I think a collective voice will be helpful there.
So it sounds like we do have topics for September 1st meeting.
Let, let me then volunteer, if we may, um, so that the superintendent's staff doesn't have to be working on other items there. If that is, 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 let me ask, is that something that is driven at all by staff, the legislative stuff, or is it clearly just a board item?
I think it's clearly going to be board-driven.
All right, then I, I will, I can have Ms. Brown, who's probably gonna, she's probably watching right now, is gonna start throwing rocks at me when I get back to the office. I can have Ms. Brown prepare an item for the September 1st agenda that is specifically a board-related item, uh, to put on there. I'll also have, um, her prepare an item that is for our Neola updates. Um, and Ms., uh, Martinez Lopez, that gives you time to place it into advertising today?
Yes, but for the, uh, attorney-client session, um, that would have had to have been advertised, by the time we get back to the office, it'll be afternoon, so Calistir Banner will not receive it in time in order for a full seven days.
Well, this is for the September 1st meeting, which is, uh, nine, 10 days from now?
Correct. Which would have been advertised seven days before, which would have made it August 25th. It's seven days before, so it's, we're at the 23rd. Oh, Calistir Banner doesn't accept any advertisements after 12 for the first.
Right. Advertising now for the?
Attorney-client session on the first.
Right. Now, the attorney-client session has been previously advertised, so at this position, at this time, would be the time where we'd break and go into that, and we essentially are rescheduling in that sense, but, um...
That's for an incorrect date, because we're not doing it today, so that advertisement was for today, which we're not doing.
Correct. And so, uh, the requirement is that I give notice on the record. Um, and of course, we do need to proceed then to advertising, um, of the attorney-client session. Now, the attorney-client session being something that is not, uh, that is a confidential matter, um, if we've got, September 1st is now, seven, eight, that, that's nine days. So if we got it to the Calistir Banner right away, or, or just ran a duplicate item again with a change of date, is that something that Calistir Banner cannot accomplish?
Not at this timeframe, because they won't, I would have had to have put it in today before noon, in hopes that they would have returned it, so that it would have been advertised by the 25th. So if it doesn't go in today until after 12, it's not going to be posted on the 25th. The earliest it will get posted for advertising is the 26th. So if we're okay with the 26th, then we can move forward.
With our public announcement today, the fact that it's been previously announced, and permission of the board chair, that would be my course of action that I would take.
That's certainly.
Um, so, uh, as of the first, what I will need to do then, is provided that I'm going to do my Neola updates, and then also the board will discuss legislative updates, um, I need to set a time for 11 o'clock or 1 o'clock for us to, uh, have Owens and Associates and Ms. Green, um, to be present for that. Ms. Green estimates that her portion of the presentation will be about 30 minutes that she needs to discuss. So that, of course, then indicates the board will also have to have its discussion matters, so I would allot roughly an hour. Um, and then we'll need to come back on the record. So if we believe that between our Neola updates and also legislative review, that we can begin our work session at 9:00 a.m. and finalize by 11:00 a.m. for us to move into that, then I'll make that so. Would two hours in your estimation be sufficient?
I would think so.
Okay. Then allow me, please, to just read this off so that it's all appropriately noticed. Board members, I'm notifying you that Attorney Suzanne Green of Vice Cole Law Firm has informed me that advice is needed regarding claim number J 86-70115, style Monet, Monor, Monet Moore as Natural Guardian of A M, a minor, versus the School Board of Marion County, Florida. Pursuant to section 286.011 Florida statutes known as the Government and the Sunshine Act, on behalf of Attorney Green, I'm requesting an attorney-client session with the board for the purpose of discussing and evaluation or compromise of said claim. I'll ask the board's clerk to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this attorney-client session and the names of the persons attending to be published. It suggested the attorney-client session should be held September 1st, 2022, during the school board meeting, which is scheduled currently for 9:00 a.m., and that the attorney-client session be held at 11:00 a.m. during a brief recess, or be held following the end of a board meeting, if the board meeting finishes earlier. As required by this statute, only the following individuals will be present. Nancy Thrower, board chair, Kelly King, vice chair. I'm sorry, this is, uh, an old, an old script that I, uh, put together here. Uh, you can tell I was doing this this morning, so, um...
We understand.
But you probably need to...
Board Chair, Board Chair Reverend Cummings, uh, Vice Chair, um, Allison Campbell, Kelly, uh, Board Member Kelly King, Board Member Don Browning, and I've forgotten all five of you here, and, and, and Board Member Nancy Thrower, Superintendent Diane Gullett, myself, Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney, Suzanne Green, Esquire of Vice Cole Law Firm and/or its designees. I'll ask a court reporter to record the session, also as required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with a clerk of the school board. Upon the conclusion of any litigation and/or settlement of all claims arising out of this incident, the transcript will be made public record. Thank you very much, board members. Anybody have anything else additional to add to that?
No, um, I don't. Go ahead, Ms. Thor.
Thank you. I, I don't have anything additional to add to that, but I did want to bring up a couple of, um, topics for a work session, and it doesn't certainly have to be September 1st, but...
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I would love to get an update in regards, um, to our budget, how we're doing with, uh, hiring. Um, I know that Employment Services has been working overtime on weekends. I'm still not sure that it's really out there in the community, all of the innovative opportunities we have, um, to join Marion County Public Schools. And I know that in the past quite a few years, there have been positions that have been funded that have never been filled. Uh, so that makes a difference in terms of what our budget looks like. If it, so without going too far further, I, I also know that if we reach our goal of, of really having the, the folks that we need assisting kids each and every day, that, that's going to make our budget look different. Um, so I, I would like to get a little update on that, and, and in terms of what I'm hearing from the community, would love to get a public update on how we're doing with transportation. There's been so much work that has gone in by so many parties, departments, the community. And I, I know that we're getting there, um, but, and to, to get an update, I think would be important, because, uh, transportation sort of drives everything.
Literally.
Literally.
No pun intended.
Okay.
So, as I said, it doesn't have to be the first, but I, I'd like to hear something soon.
Yeah.
I think that's warranted.
I agree. Um, when I, as a board member, and I'm here on September 1st, and I know last week, and we're not having any discussion on what's happening in our schools, as a board member, it's a little bit alarming, because I'm like, we're not having any update? There wasn't anything we could find an update on other than Neola? Um, I did have on my list, um, I was going to save it for my comments, uh, pretty much the same as Ms. Thrower. Um, I would like an update on our transportation and our buses, you know, we know we struggled last year. Um, I know I've had a few phone calls this year, but I would like to see a large picture of what's actually happening. And Ms. Thrower, you brought up, um, hiring, and that's great, and we need to get them higher, but even on my way to, um, here this morning, and I've heard it in the past week or so, there's something going on where we, even if we hire people, they're not being processed soon enough, and they're maybe going to other counties, or they've been waiting at least a month. So something's going on there, and as a board member, I would like to know why, um, if we have a shortage and we're not hiring, or we are hiring, you know, staff, hopefully, but they can't get hired on, and it's taken two weeks, up to a month, something's going on. And as a board member, I would like more information on that. So, thank you, Ms. Thrower, for bringing that up. Um, then, like I said, I was going to bring it up in comments, but I think it's appropriate to bring it up now.
Thank you, Board Member King. All right, go ahead.
Uh, I, thank you for bringing that up, too. I, I know I had a conversation yesterday with some representatives from HR about that very same question. And if there's a greater conversation we need to have about the outsourcing of our background checks and, and fingerprinting, if that's a part of the holdup, or if there, what other solutions we could, as a board, work on to try to, to help. I know we're in the process of hiring a new executive director of human resources, so I think that may have also caused a little bit of a hiccup in that department, but I completely concur. If there's a public conversation we can have about the challenges we're experiencing in human resources, I welcome it.
And that's not at all, the Chair, sorry.
Mr. Browning.
And, and, I definitely want to acknowledge.
Hold on, Ms. Thor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought I had the floor.
Well, I can, I can.
No, Mr. Browning.
I defer, sir.
No, Mr. Browning.
Okay, okay, thank you, Chair. Uh, yes, I, boy, we're right on target, and, and I'll, I'm going to address some of this in my comments. Uh, there is a, a heavy focus on management and efficiency in school districts, uh, and, boy, uh, uh, Board Member King really hit it on, there's something going on there. It's so important. And as we, in business-meeting fashion, especially workshop, uh, we work through some of these things and we bring them up, uh, boy, I concur. I, I, I'm, I'm thrilled to hear this discussion, uh, because this is what we do for a living, you know, as board members, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, and, and we're insulated, we can bring up deficiencies without it being accusatory, without it being, uh, um, uh, in negative. It's actually positive. It's what you do on a board. Again, if this were Ford Motor Company, we would say, whoa, bring it out here, we've got problems, we've got problems. This isn't right. Why are we losing these teachers? Why are they throwing in the towel? And it isn't always about money. Uh, often it's about, uh, what education school districts have evolved into. Uh, and finally, it's just not worth it to people to hang in in that profession. And so if we ever start down that road too far, we won't be educating our kids. So, uh, I, I, oh, I'm excited. Uh, you, this is a home run for me. Thank you, Chair.
Board Member Thor.
Thank you. And, yes, the good news is, and it's a great problem to have, is that there is a lot of interest in joining Marion County Public Schools for a variety of, of reasons. Um, people are going where the money is, they're going where the flexibility is, they're going where the innovation is, and those are all directions that we're, uh, very much featuring. Um, when there's a grapefruit in the garden hose, it's, it's probably because of the, the numbers that we have coming in and, and getting them processed. And it's entirely possible in my mind that the previous processes and procedures that have worked for us in the past, you know, can potentially be, be tweaked. And I know that those are conversations, Dr. Goll, that, that we have had and that are continuing. Um, and so getting those updates is, is important for the board, because if there's extra support that's needed and it's being requested, you know, that, that's where we come in, you know? Certainly want to help and be nimble, and I'd rather have one more meeting than one less meeting if it means that we're solving... less meeting if it means that we're solving immediate issues with getting the services to our kids and our families in our community. So, let's do it.
Obviously, obviously, this is something that has hit all of our radar, apparently, because I think we're probably all hearing the same, same concern. So, Superintendent, we'll add that we need a report from HR on this backlog of, if there's a backlog, or whatever the processes is with our HR process, hiring process, our onboarding. I think it's more with the onboarding process of getting people actually to the job or to the position. You can speak to us.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, yes, and I've heard, and I know several of us have had conversations. I've also heard directly from potential candidates for Marion County Public Schools, and I've asked the team, had already asked them to start tracking so that we could determine where the challenges are, to include fingerprinting, background checks, because we have, as you know, outsourced different processes. And so, I've asked them to track, to give me actual details, pardon me, from start to finish with those candidates, to see where the difficulty may be. So, that's already underway. So, the plan is we'll bring that update on the fifteenth with the transportation updates as well.
Fifteenth of?
September.
September.
Yes. We, I know you haven't gotten there yet, Chair, but we have three items, and one of the items was moved to later dates. So, we'll also have the student progression plan and the state and district assessments for our students as one of the topics as well.
Okay.
That's for, that's for which date?
The fifteenth, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, I do need to back up the August twenty-fifth special work session that we had scheduled is no longer needed, from my understanding. Okay. So, we won't be having that August twenty-fifth special work session. I think that was for the budget?
That was for the budget unless the board wants anything else. Ms. Boston Ellis has concluded her presentation.
Board Members, I was good. I was good.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I know in the past, we always, sometimes we needed more information, and then we didn't have enough time on the schedule, but I think we've done an excellent job, and Ms. Boston Ellis has done an extra job. I feel that my questions have been answered, and I don't feel like we need one. I don't know.
Me, too. All right. A special board meeting is scheduled for September ninth at five fifteen PM. The purpose of the meeting is to hold a two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three final budget hearing. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at nine AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the school improvement plan for McIntosh Area Charter School, the student progression plan, one of two, and two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three state and district assessment updates. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do you have any?
No, sir.
Additional comments or concerns?
Thank you, sir.
Attorney Powers, any additional?
Don't believe anything further, sir.
All right. Our Superintendent, Dr. Gullett.
Thank you again, Chair. Members of the board, just a few items. First, want to thank you for your support and approval today of the utilization of the contract for internal auditing services. We've spent quite a bit of time in my time here in Marion County thus far. Ms. Boston Ellis and I have discussed how we can best obtain expert, expertise in internal auditing, and I think it's really important for the public to know we're committed to this, and we look forward to this process unfolding so we can get very strong and credible feedback on our internal procedures. So, thank you for your support in that. I did want to also comment on the question about Board Docs. As a reminder, we did ask Board Docs, the company, if they could add the dollar sign, and that is not something that is supported. I know Board Member Browning, you brought that up earlier today, and that is not something they support. Ms. Martinez Lopez, you can confirm that.
That's correct.
We've asked that a couple of times, but it's, but it's not something that's why they choose in their platform to list it as dollar amount in text version, but they do not provide us the opportunity to have a dollar sign. And I know that is different than we often write, but that is something that the platform doesn't allow us to do.
Wow.
So, I just.
May I, Board, Chair? Okay.
And just a couple of other brief reminders. We have our parent partnership event this week at Lake Weir High School, starting at nine AM, and another Engage MCPS virtual session on September first. At that session for the Engage, we are delighted to be able to provide more information to our parents on assessments that their students will see this year. The progress monitoring, as you know, has changed. We're looking forward to providing more information on that, and also the role of the parent liaisons and the work that's happening, and how they can connect at the school site to get additional resources to ensure that their students are successful this year. So, thank you for your time.
Yes, Superintendent, could you get, get me some of the feedback that you, that came from them on that item? A dollar amount should have a dollar sign. I mean, it's, if they have, you know, if they don't want to do it, of course, it would be our, our incumbent on us to push them, but I'd just like to hear what they have to say from an intellectual point of view, because it's just so easy to miss a dollar in amount of figures that doesn't have a dollar sign, whether it's yen, or pounds, or dollars. It just, it just, it's prudent to have a dollar sign. Might have to go to the CEO of that company or the board, and I'd be glad to. But if you give me some contacts or some kind, whatever they've supplied to you, that would, that would help me. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
So, yes.
Oh, all right. Oh, for comments. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And it was kind of germane that we, we had that discussion earlier with the board in terms of Robert's rules, because I tend to go first, and if my comments then are addressed, it's just kind of helpful when you're sitting here and you're mounting an argument. If it's misunderstood, or if it's commented upon, then I can, having brought it up, I can enlighten. If I'm the last to speak, I won't have that problem. I'm typically picked by the Chair as the first to speak. So, that would, that would be very, very helpful, I think, to the, to this board member, to be able to address, because we're trying to get, we're trying to get information out, especially when it comes to comments. So, my, my first item is I would like to introduce into the record, and I'm assuming this is appropriate. This is a, this week's Ocala Star Banner headline article, and it's called Grand Jury Remove Four Board Members is the headline. So, it's easy, it's easy, but it's, once it's public record, that's, that's handy. It needs, it's mandatory reading, my kudos go out to Star Banner, and it addresses the idea of branding within a school district, and how that branding, we want to speak positively toward things. You can read it for yourself, but the idea of, often we only go down a supportive point of view, and we don't go down, and it creates a mismanagement issue. If we don't go down, then the, say we only address the pros, we thank each other, that type of thing, kind of a happy, a happy time. We don't address the cons, then mismanagement can result, and I'm paraphrasing in the article, but it's, it is incredibly good reading, and it's done by our governor. Now, I have, and it has to do with a blind spot that is, that apparently develops when it comes to this type of issue where we just go down the positive side of things. A blind spot develops, and budgets go out of line, education maybe drops off, trends develop with low performance, that type of thing. And the governor is looking at the entire state of Florida, which, of course, we all do, and, and the nation is looking at the nation, but all the school districts, it's really become, it's come to the fore. But, but my concern is with the governor. He's looking at the entirety of the state of Florida, all the districts. I have written to him and asked him to focus on my district, too, and Marion County, because we want to accelerate to functional, well-managed. We want that look. We want to know how we're doing and how we can get there. So, I've asked him specifically to put us at the head of the list, if he will, and I think that will help all staff, all students, the community, and this board. The next item that I have is a, just reference to the budget. I, I receive this, I have a committee that works on budget, and I will enter this into the public record for, for the district. And it's the idea of budgets, when we have a flat line for students, or let's say a debatable flat line, but within a one or two percentage points of increase or decrease, we have a budget amount that goes, just looking at the last three years, right at ten percent, fourteen percent, twenty percent, give or take a few percentage points, maybe we're a little over, but, but we keep expanding. And I just want to put this out, this came from the community and the committee that that's really working really, really hard on the budget issue. Let's see. I want to remind the board, we're talking safety, education, finances, that's really the meat of what we do, and we must, it kind of slipped, it's just been laying out there, that letter to the, the county commission on our, on the bad survey that we had for Stanton Weersdale. I want that to be, I don't want that to get lost somewhere in the shuffle. We never did get to it, we never did nail it down. We know we had a bad survey, we had a problematic survey that included a road that clearly existed under ninety-five, three-six-one Florida statute on easements. So, I just want to remind the board that we need to, we need to bring that forward. It's a safety issue, it's critical, we do not own that land, we did acquit claim to it. There is nothing in our, that I see in our world that would preclude us from having that be properly addressed now that we have cleared the title to it, and we also have HUD funds that are available. I think we do need to address it, and just with full vigor, and not let it, it's kind of slipped out of the center of attention, and I'd like to bring it back into that center of attention. However we get there, and we can, we can tie it into our linkage to the county commission, because we are the two authorities that have rendered that small population of minority people absolutely in a second-class status now for sixty years. Thank you, Chair. That'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Thrower?
Thank you. I'm sure everyone knows that today is voting day, and so, just here to encourage everyone that is registered to vote to please exercise your civic responsibility. I'm quite certain in many classrooms today, there is an emphasis on civic responsibility. I'll just mention one teacher, the last name is Stutzman. She does an amazing job with her third-grade class at Ward Highlands Elementary School. Those kids know all about the legislative, the executive, the judicial. Ms. Stutzman invites elected officials into her classroom to share with kids. I adored doing that last year, and they were even zooming into the Supreme Court in Florida, just incredible. And voting is the foundation of the United States of America, and that's what makes it work. I'm a little bit distressed that the turnout continues to be so incredibly low, because there's a disconnect there. The interest, especially on social media, seems to be very high, but yet that doesn't seem to transfer to, to getting people into the voting booth. So, I would just like to say my piece and encourage everyone, you have until seven o'clock this evening, so you still have time to, to meet your candidates and get up to speed, and then go in there and make your vote count, please. The next thing I wanted to focus on is I'm very grateful that our governor is moving in a direction of acknowledging the expertise that we have already in our public schools, and I'm speaking directly about our paraprofessionals. There's a lot of talk lately about people from other careers coming in and becoming teachers. I did that myself. I'm not a career educator. I didn't join the field of public education until age thirty-five, thirty-four, maybe. And I started as a classroom paraprofessional, and it took the kids five years to convince me that I should become a special needs teacher, but I'm very glad that I did. And so, it's definitely my hope and prayer and my advocacy, especially since I mentioned it several months ago, well, if we're going to open the door to other career professionals, open the door wider, I would say. The, the door had been opened a long time ago, but I had to be competitive with people that had put their time and money and effort into learning the pedagogy of education and being able to bring their best on day one. And it occurred to me months ago that our paraprofessionals, a long time ago, now either have to have an associate's degree, sixty hours, I believe that is, or pass the paraprofessional test, just to become a para. And that wasn't always the case. I think maybe a long time ago, you had to have a high school diploma, maybe not even that initially. So, I'm very glad to see our hard-working paraprofessionals being acknowledged. I think it would be awesome for teachers to have that person in their classroom, side by side, and get a bonus for that, because that becomes more of a team-teaching, co-teach type model, and lord knows, our kids will always benefit from having adults in the classroom that are capable and really care about them, and that know what to do in the small-group instruction, and understand the curriculum, and understand classroom management. So, I was really excited to hear about that, and I hope that continues to move forward. The second thing that I wanted to illuminate is that, you know, as someone that sits on the Marion County School Board, it is important to me to talk about our successes. It's also really important to talk about our challenges and, and be honest about our challenges. Anyone that follows Marion County Public School District knows that we've been through it the last few years, when, when you look at everything that has occurred, and it's been monumental, navigating through COVID, navigating through electing to appoint our superintendent for the very first time. You know, these have created monumental foundational changes, and I continue to be very excited about our trajectory. I also continue to be very realistic about our challenges, and when it's being brought forward in the media that school board members are being removed, it makes me even more grateful and even more confident that Marion County Public Schools is being viewed very highly from both our governor and the legislature, as evidenced by our governor has chosen to endorse school board candidates in other counties. And it's my understanding, anyway, that there was no candidate that was, that has been endorsed that's currently running for the Marion County School Board, even though some of them have received a lot of support, you know, from sitting school board members. So I'm not going to sugarcoat anything. I, I continue to be grateful that our leadership, that we communicate so well with. And Vice Chair Campbell, you deserve kudos for a lot of that. You've agreed to take the lead. And just sitting down and having coffee, you know, with our legislators, inviting them to see our schools, spending time with them. You know, if, if you're truly concerned about what's going on in our schools, there are ample opportunities, not only to just come and see, but also to participate via Zoom, you know, with the engagement that we're doing and things like that. So you can learn the real deal. And so I continue to be very proud to represent the Marion County School Board. It's always important as a school board member to look at increasing value and reducing cost. The biggest part of our role is, is policy and finance. And when you're looking at publicly educating upwards of 45,000 students and looking out for the best interests of over $6,000, 6,000 employees and working within the parameters and framework of what's required of us, it is a tremendous responsibility. And, and it's, it can get muddy in terms of understanding and all of the requirements that we do have. So I'm grateful for the community connections that are being built, including with our fellow elected officials of other entities. You know, knowledge is power and, and we learn about what their constraints are. We learn about what their challenges are. We learn about what's important to them and vice versa, simply by opening the door and communicating and inviting people in. So I'm looking forward to what's to come. I'm very grateful that we have people in place. Just our former director of our exceptional student education, which was brought up today, special needs and what it costs to serve them and sign language interpreters and all of the different requirements. You know, when those individual education plans are truly written professionally in a, in a way that reflects the services that students actually need and deserve to receive, we ended up being able to get back a million dollars. That's, that's big money. And bringing Oak Crest and Evergreen out of external operation, which was such, such a pit, saved taxpayers over a million dollars. So there is a very discerning eye, I would say, that every school board member has to reducing cost and increasing value. And the fact of the matter is, it's an expensive undertaking with a lot of legs. But I'm still here swinging. That's all I have.
Thank you, Board Member Thor. Board Member King.
Yeah, I'm still here swinging too. I only have a few more months and I'm like, I am finishing to the end. And I'm glad that we are not down south. And I will say, and I will announce it to everyone, that I am never a board member that would brand anything. And a pure example of that today is right before you mentioned that, I'm like, let's talk about transportation. Let's talk about why we aren't having our employees hired soon enough. Because I've always said, and I don't know if I've said it recently, but you can never manage a secret, ever. If we hide it, we can never take care of it. And our job, and I take my job seriously, and I believe everyone else does, is to give our employees, give our superintendent what they need and then get out of their way. You know, and sometimes there's this little things that are just in the way, but they are big, they're monumental. And this is a board that wants to facilitate, help where we need to and then get out of the way. Also, I do want to remind this board because when we were talking about things early, you know, things have changed in the past couple of years. And the board now is solely responsible for the success and the challenges or the failures of this district. In the past, it wasn't that way. You know, there would be, we could point fingers or whatever. That's not so anymore. That's the board. So personally, I take that seriously, you know. And I do take full responsibility for the successes of Marion County Public Schools, the failures of Marion County Public Schools and our challenges. And I till November, I am here and I will work diligently and all of that. Today is Tuesday for voting for our primaries. There are three open seats for Marion County Public Schools. This is important. Children and money to our taxpayers. I don't think there's anything more important than our children and our money. So make sure you know who you're voting for and to put in these seats. And that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member King. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. I'm, I'm on the same mindset and wavelength as, as some of my fellow board members here. First of all, as a public relations practitioner who has made branding a huge part of what I do, the only brand I want to focus on for Marion County Public Schools is what we say all the time, is helping every student succeed. That is a part of our brand. And as long as we stick to helping every student succeed, we will never find ourselves in a scenario like we've seen in South Florida. So I, I want to stress that first of all. I also want to mention that while we certainly don't need an additional budget workshop, and that is not what I'm asking for. But I did mention on Thursday, and I want to bring it up again, I continue to have concerns about not budgeting for transportation for our extracurricular activities and athletic programs. I know there's fundraising that happens at the gates at football games and concession stands and all in part because the district frankly doesn't allocate additional resources to those programs that need those resources. The online game ticketing process continues to be a challenge. I know we're, we're not all a bed of roses. You know, a fellow board member had mentioned that we don't always want to just talk about the positives. Well, I have a couple of things. Online game ticketing continues to be a challenge. Frankly, because if we're focusing on online ticket purchases and we don't have cell phone service in some of these schools, that continues to be a challenge. And I am open to any solutions, any and all solutions that we have in those areas. Additionally, a fellow board member mentioned a road survey issue that the county commission may need to pursue as far as a safety issue. I welcome further dialogue with the county regarding Southeast 36th Avenue in Bellevue. The challenges we're having on that road during school hours continue to be significant. I know the team is working on our internal solutions that we might be able to pursue. But some of those issues very well may take county commission intervention, and I welcome those conversations. As this board knows, school attendance has been something that I have focused on. School attendance is important every day. I was noticing yesterday's attendance counts. And at several of our elementary schools yesterday, we were under 90%. Parents and families, attendance matters. If your students are in school, they will have the opportunity to learn. To see that we are only in the first 10 days of school and several of our elementary schools are already at less than 90% attendance is appalling and scary. I understand that there are extenuating circumstances, sometimes beyond our control, but that really is scary. But while mentioning that, I also want to give a shout out to Bellevue High School, Vanguard High School and Lake Weir Middle School, who were all over 99% attendance yesterday. So these are attendance counts that we as board members get every day. And we're following and whatever we can do to help ensure students are attending school, I am open to all of those solutions. I had the privilege, board, to be a guest speaker in three high school classes last week, talking about starting my business, my career path, running for elected office, the roles of school board, and lots of other questions that students brought up. It was a privilege to be with Mr. Ritterhoff and Ms. McKenzie's classes at Forest High School. And as Ms. Thorer was saying at another school as well, I welcome the invitation. Should there be other schools interested in having that class time to devote to real-world applicable conversations? Should there be other schools or classrooms that would like to invite me? I am open to it because it was a ton of fun. And I felt like that the students really learned. From freshmen to seniors, I had the full gamut of conversations. And, and it was a, a great opportunity for them to learn about what all has happened in my career, what it looks like to start a business, additionally, what it looks like to run for office and what school board actually does. Those are all important conversations for students. I am wearing my I Voted sticker today, as fellow board members have mentioned, because that was one of the first things that I did today. I read this morning that the supervisor of elections is anticipating that only about 25% of our electorate will turn out for this vote. When I looked at, and I had it open just a moment ago, right now we're hovering around 18%, 18.7% effective right now. At 11:10 was the last time the supervisor of elections website updated. But he was quoted today as saying about 25% of the electorate should be turning out today. Hopefully, it gets to be a lot more. Again, you have until 7:00 PM today. I know when I was elected in 2020, my school board seat was voted on by more than 70% of voters in our community. If you haven't voted, please go exercise your right. I was told when I was running that I may have felt called to run for public office, but it was up to God on election night to tell me if I had been called to serve. So today, I'm in a prayerful attitude this morning for who will be chosen to be on this board with us starting in November. Please vote. And finally, on a personal note, board, today is my parents' 54th wedding anniversary. And even though they don't live in Marion County, they still watch these board meetings. And I know that my dad's watching right now. So happy anniversary to my mom and dad. And that's all I have today. Thanks.
Anniversary.
Your dad just had a birthday too.
He did. He did. He just had a birthday. 74 and it's their 54th wedding anniversary. Got married three days after he turned 20.
Thank you, board members, for all of your, your comments as, as well, every, and superintendent attorney, Elena. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Lopez. Thank you. My, my comments will be brief. I think Ms. Thor mentioned about the opening of some of these classifications for teachers. And I, I, I have to admit, I had some concerns when I heard the one about the veterans. Not that veterans aren't viable candidates. I just want to know the process and how, how that was going to happen. But in the, in the, in the, the announcement of that, I thought about what about the ones that we already have in the classroom? That was my concern. We have some wonderful staff that are in the classroom right now that are serving in those capacities. And yet they have yet not been given that opportunity to, to do those things that apparently they would leapfrog to get. So I'm hoping that we'll actually probably look at that as being one of our legislative requests.
It's already on my list.
Definitely one of mine is that we have some conversations with our, our legislative delegation on how to open up this field. This, this shortage of staff, and I don't want to just say teachers, I want to say staff because it's nationwide. And we have to look at, we have to kind of look at what's, what's pushing this shortage nationwide that is affecting all of us. And, and why are people leaving the field? And why aren't people leaving, why aren't people wanting to be in the classroom or on school campuses? So I think we have to do some of our, some deep dives as well for us to kind of understand what's really going on with this, in this time and age. I, I, I thought, I, I questioned and said, have we, have we become so outdated in how we're doing things? Or are we not being, moving in a, in a forward momentum fast enough? Or what is it? And as Mr. Brown has said, we, sometimes it's not the money why people are leaving the field. So we need to really take an analysis of the situation and have some real conversations and then come up with some real strategies on how to work it out. Just because it's bad in somebody, in another county, doesn't mean it has to be bad here. We could, we could be the pilot. We could be the, we could be the one that turned it around. And, and others look at us as a model for it. So I'm, I'm looking forward to what we're going to do and having those conversations with, concerning that and definitely with you all. On Friday, I had the opportunity to, to go to Dunlop High School football game, the beginning of the game. I had so many engagements, but I wanted to make sure that I was there because it was very important to see the dedication of their scoreboard, their new scoreboard. They had this $150,000 scoreboard that community, the community and members in the community made sure that they got. And we as a board made sure that they got it installed. And it was, it's truly a, a unique scoreboard. I think they, they have one of the same ones at the University of Florida on the field. So, and it was truly a, a wonderful event to be out there. I, I too miss, miss Campbell and concerned about funding for extracurricular activities and some of our sporting programs. I, I know we have some challenges, but also I'm looking, when I look at, I played sports in Marion County. And I understand that there's a, we want, we want our kids to be in the safest environment, on the field, off the field. And sometimes we have to take a look at, see what we're doing and where we can do it, do it better. And ask, and actually ask and look for community partners in getting some of these things done. I'm looking forward, we talked about the, the five-year facilities plan last week with Mr. Knight. And some of that, that came up about the athletic contest facilities and things. So we have to continue to have that conversation and, and not just have the conversation, but get some traction on that conversation and start doing some things with that as well. I, I also heard the board members talk about branding. And I, I too read that article about those board members that were being removed for branding. I think as, as a board, it is our job to brand certain things. When I say, when I say branded, I don't mean to brand it all as good or to brand it all as bad. Our branding should be, our branding should be transparency. Our branding should be the truth. Our branding should be facts and not fiction. And that's what our brand should be as a board, that we're calling it like it is, saying it like it is, good, bad, indifferent. Who likes it or who don't like it? The truth has to be the truth. And we have to address issues. I, I just listened today. I don't think this board has ever had a problem with trying to brand something in, to cover up thing. I think that's the, that's the issue those board members had. They may have been, or that, that board was accused of branding things and trying to make things look all one way. No situation is all one way. There is no one situation that's going to be all one way. There's, I, I learned a long time ago, when you have a conflict between two, two entities, there's more than one side of the story. And actually, it's, and folk would always say, it's two sides of the story. Well, no, it's three. It's your side, their side, and it's the truth. And, and so I, because sometimes their truths aren't really the truth. So I'm, I'm, I'm excited about where our board is as far as we are very transparent. We've always been transparent since I've been on the board. We've addressed issues as they came and tried to be proactive in addressing issues before they got to us. And I think even just the conversation today, talking about HR, that's trying to address the issue before it gets out of hand and buses and, and all those types of things. So as we continue to do that type of branding, those brandings of, of, of truth and facts and not fiction, I, I don't have an issue with that part of it. And I, I don't, I don't put us in the boat with other, other ages, other districts that are doing those things. You all have stated today is, is election day. I'm probably, I'm the only one up here that's a little bit different than the rest of you because I'm actively engaged in the process. And I, I, I don't tell people who to vote for. But I do encourage the process of voting. I do encourage the process of voting. Of course, in my personal politicking, yes, I do tell people to vote for, but never in a forum like this. This is a, a huge time for our, we talk about civics, we talk about history. This is a huge time to have the history lessons and civic lessons, as Ms. Thor said, because then maybe kids could understand the process. And then for the, for the record, we got some kids that are 18 that should have already been registered to vote. And I hope they are partaking in this election process and voting and doing their civic duty and being engaged and involved. Because if you, I, I, I would have a hate for you to, to have been in school for 12, 13 years and, and 18 years old and you're a senior. And then you graduate a few years later and then say, you were not engaged in the process of understanding, you didn't understand government, local government, and you, you, you feel like you got shorted something because you were not engaged. Well, I'm challenging. Well, I'm challenging you, young people, to get engaged now. Get engaged now. Start understanding the process so that when you are eligible to vote, that you can vote, and that you become an active participant in our community. The only way our community gets better is we have to have engaged folk. We need engaged parents. We talked about the parent engagement event that's coming up this weekend. Parents, it's out there. It has been advertised. We talked about attendance. We can't do it. We are responsible. You're right, Ms. King. We are responsible. We have a personal accountability as a board to the things that happen in this district. However, there's some ownership in the families. There's some ownership in the community, and we need, it has to be eighteen ever. I've said this before. We need our kids in school. We need, I was at, as I said, I was at Dunellen Friday, and I was like, you know what's the, I asked the principal and administrators, and I said, hey, what's the key number today? And they were like, I don't know, what are you talking about? I said, it's a hundred and seventy-two. They're like, one seventy-two? I said, yeah, a hundred and seventy-two more days till summer, you know, jokingly. But it's already, we are counting down already. So parents, if they're missing kid's school right now, every day that a kid is not in the classroom is valuable instruction time that's taken away from them. So if the, if the parent is not encouraging or pushing that kid to be there or not knowing or actively participating, helping them, then that's going to be part of the problem. If they're not sick, my mom had a different, different type of thing. She was like, listen, if you ain't dead. And she did use that bad English when she said it. If you ain't dead, you going to school. There was no, there was no conversation, there was no debate. You were going to school. And so we, we need to continue to push that our kids are in school in front of our qualified teachers and staff so that they can get what they need to get and be successful. You can't get, you can't, you can't be successful if you miss thirty days of school out of a hundred eighty-day school year. So I'm looking forward to what's going to happen in the days ahead. And as we move forward in our district, I'm expecting us to have a wonderful year. I know that we have kinks in the chain, but I expect that as we move, those kinks will get unraveled out of the chain. So, and that's all I have today for comments. Elena, do we, Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have any student disciplinary issues that we need to address?
No, sir. We'll need to recess for the early reentry.
Okay, so just early reentry. Okay, so at this time, we're going to recess this meeting at eleven-thirty-one for a early reentry meeting. Meeting recess at eleven-thirty-one. Can we please clear the room?